Good evening, call this meeting to order. Everyone, please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. May I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Berg, here. Mrs. Dye?
Here.
Mr. Pavulovic?
Here.
Mr. Mandela?
Here.
And Mr. Sicala?
Here. At this time, I will open the meeting up to the public for any comment for items on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Ms. Sicala.
Do we have any committee reports tonight?
Just have a comment.
Okay.
I attended the South End Art Show today, and I think it's my 10th and final one.
Congratulations.
Yeah, and I just want to say that Mrs. Martin and her team do an amazing job. I mean, the gym was just covered everywhere with students' artwork, and it was really, really, just an impressive scene. So I just wanted to say, it was such a nice thing to see, and over the course of time, it's just gotten better and better, so I thought it was very nice.
I was here as well, it was awesome.
It really was.
I still have four more to go. But who's counting?
Yeah, I know, absolutely. But it really, it just was really, really nice to see. She did a great job, and so everybody did a great job.
She always does.
Any other committee reports?
She's amazing.
Okay, hearing none. Let's move on to our board presentation. Tonight is the night, right, Mr. Featherman?
Tonight's the night.
Good night. It's our 2016-2017 budget hearing, and I welcome everybody here who's here to listen to it and ask questions or present on it.
Good evening, everyone. Board of Education.
Good evening.
Administrators, parents and friends. A lot of what you'll see tonight is a summary, a recap of two previous hearings we've held, and in between, we've had meetings to pare down expenditures in those areas we could. So let's talk briefly about the roadmap that got us here tonight. We've had some BOE Finance Committee meetings in March, again, identifying drivers of the 16-17 budget. At that time, we prioritized and pared down expenditures as best we could. We held public sessions on March 8th and the 22nd to deal with those areas of the budget, and tonight, April 26th, is the final hearing. Let's talk briefly about the budget preparation timeline. Back in December, as the administrators will attest to, is when those conversations began. At that time, the building-based administrators were working with their team of content area experts, specialists, and so forth to build their budget. And from there, Ms. Tavernier and myself held meetings with each of them to help prioritize their needs. The state comes to our rescue and does give us some money, and we are gracious enough to accept it, and here are those figures. Park and transportation, some for security, for debt service payment, professional development, and special education aid. These are state funds. The district of our size, we're most appreciative of any and all of the support. On March 8th, the BOE approved the tentative budget. Some of you may have been here for that. And on the 14th, Ms. Tavernier submitted that to the Department of Education. Since then, we've gotten here tonight, and we'll share that with you. So here is the total tax levy and miscellaneous income that I will go through with you for 2016-17. It's $28 million. Let's talk about that. Here's an overview of all of the categories, and we will briefly talk about each of them. From regular instruction all the way down to debt service and the total annual budget, we will talk about that. Each category will be broken down tonight, and we'll take any questions that you may This figure's in red because we have a reduction, so we want to highlight that, and anything you see in parentheses, more or less you'd say is in our favor, has helped reduce the budget. Let's start with operating revenue in these categories here. Talk about the budgeted fund balance, which is the unused fund balance that we carry over from this year's budget, 15-16, to next year. So these funds are carried over, and as you see there, it's less about a quarter of a million dollars. We'll talk a bit about why that is. Withdrawal from Capital Reserve. This year, we had the gymnasium project, the new bleachers, some other things going on, and so we used $260,000 from Capital Reserve. Next year, we have no plans to do that, so we're realizing at this point, anyway, that savings. Rental income. As you know, LRP downstairs is rented out to the Essex Junior Academy. Very similar numbers from last year to the next, but it is $10,000 more. Again, these are operating revenue. Custodial services, 145, 179, there's a change of $34,000. What does that cover? 70% of two custodian salaries and benefits. Who cover LRP? Down here, we talk about the total tax levy here. For the 16-17 budget, it's 2.5%. Let's talk about how we got here. So this is from last year. You see the change of $630,000. Let's continue with operating revenue. Let's talk about integrated preschool. This is money coming in. This is revenue. So the integrated preschool program this year harvested $42,000. Basically, the ratio to students, the preschool disabled students to regular education students, was quite favorable for us to generate revenue with the program. But for next year, we anticipate a greater number of preschool disableds than last. So the revenue projection's dropping, and from year to year, that's going to happen. We have to make sure that we can accommodate the preschool disableds before we can ask tuition-based regular ed students to join the program. That's just the way it is. So the priority clearly is for the preschool disabled. Aftercare, we generate some revenue there, $57,000. This year, we're realizing an additional $2,000 in revenue because the Y has asked us to add a small program during the summer. We graciously accepted, and they're going to pass for that. Interest income. Yes, we have some money in the bank, and that does generate revenue. We're happy about that. And other miscellaneous income here from E-Rate Fund, prior tuition year reimbursements, and use of facility fees. So there's some monies coming in from a variety of sources. Not a whole lot, but it certainly helps. Let's continue with revenue. I mentioned earlier state aid. Here, we break it down a bit more. Special education aid, transportation, security. See, some of these numbers are going up. Park stayed relatively flat, so these monies will be used for these categories, to help support professional development, whether it's Conker Math or a continued focus on differentiated instruction, bringing in Dr. Sandra Page, for instance, to help support Now, let's talk about the operating expenditures. Money comes in, the money goes out. Let's focus briefly, going back to one of the first few slides I showed you. Let's break that down here. Let's talk about, I hope I go forward, instructional programs first. Here are your regular program budget values. This includes teacher salaries and all those content areas that we have, sizable portion of our budget. You see here that there is an increase of about $92,000. Basic Skills ESL. We've talked over the last few years about our burgeoning population of ELL, or English Language Learners. Comes at a cost, so it's no surprise to see that this number has grown. And certainly, as you know, again, from months of discussion, that our focus has been on basic skills and early intervention. We feel that that's a critical part of improving the top of that pyramid as we go forward. Media services, just as you'd think, are media specialists, their salaries are there, Instructional staff training, what's that? Again, additional professional development, Performance Matters, My Learning Plan, the nuts and bolts of how our administrative staff evaluates their teachers, their non-certificated staff, staff workshops, and miscellaneous supplies. And we do find some money for instructional equipment. You know, our teachers do have to have some toys to work with, right, Jesse? We have to have some fun in there, some manipulatives and some other things, right? Talk briefly about technology expenditures. Broke them down into these categories here. Why it keeps doing that? We made it a priority to reduce this area of the budget. Again, as the board committee, myself, Ms. Tavernier, our administrators are looking for ways of reducing expenditures, we found that we can identify some areas in this budget to do that. We can use some existing funds from this year, purchase some additional lap cart, Chromebook carts, and you see some of these lines are being reduced as we do that. So in these areas here, we're realizing some savings, and we were able to pare down technology by about 13.7. We're trying to be as fiscally responsible as possible without falling behind. Briefly, special education. Pair the two. You know, the changes are modest, and some areas we're saving. We've had some changes in out-of-district status with a couple of folks, and so we're realizing some savings there. Of course, this is always, this out-of-district tuition is always a variable, right? It changes from day to day. Who knows who's going to be moving in in October, November, December, what their child's needs will be. So, you know, we put a little asterisk next to that, I mean, chances are we'll be dipping into that, right, Mr. Kenny? Now, related and extraordinary services, what's that? Well, in-house speech personnel, OT, intervention salary, ABA specialist, Mr. Parker, and some other additional after-school activities. And of course, the child study team would be the salaries for our CST members across Employee benefits. You see on the bottom here, a very large driver of our budget, of course, health benefits. I mean, the costs are going up on average of 10%, 12% a year, so it's no surprise to see these numbers increasing as they do. So we have to counteract that in the areas that we can. Pretty obvious here, social security, pension, workers' comp, tuition reimbursement. This area here is not as obvious. It includes contractual obligations such as custodial uniforms, sick day payouts on retirement, opt-out payments for medical benefits, those kinds of things. Again, no surprise that we're seeing an increase, given the state of affairs with our health How about support services? What are the expenditures there? Well, we broke them down into these four categories here. Attendance and health services, well, what's that? Well, it's nursing salaries, other salaries associated with the attendance office, some of our secretarial salaries that serve in the capacity of attendance officer. One of my assistants at the central office, part of her salary's paid as she takes care of the district-wide attendance, those kinds of things. Guidance, again, salaries are the driver of these lines here. School administration, same idea. What's general administration? Well, it's my salary, it's the administrative assistant salary, attorney fees, audit fees, subservice, Strauss-Smay, all the things that help make the business office and the central office run. How about central services? We can continue that. Business office staff salaries, tech department salaries, LRP taxes, grant debt, et cetera. Lots going on. One of the reasons we're seeing an increase here is because interest is due on the $14 million bond that we're taking out for the new referendum project, so that adds up. Additional support services, the things that we have to maintain to run the district. Regular transportation, special ed, aid and lieu, athletics, co-curricular. And this is a big part of what we do here, isn't it, in a K-12 district? We see some changes here. Let me go through some of those for you. Of course, regular transportation, there are going to be increases, certainly in the cost of gas. Anyone who's been to the pump lately, the last couple of months, it's no surprise to see that those costs get passed along to the district. I'm sure you can imagine that. Special ed transportation, it's flat. Aid and lieu, these are the funds that we pay for parents that opt not to have their child transported either to the district if they're outside of that residential radius or to an out-of-district placement. We pay them $889 for the school year. So we have a number of folks that opt for the aid and lieu. I suppose it helps them offset their own costs for gasoline and travel and so forth. Athletics is always a fairly large, healthy number here. Why the increase? Well, we had some things go on, namely lacrosse. Let's start with that. Lacrosse used to be under the co-curricular category because it had club status. But this year, as you may know, we've talked about it, we've moved lacrosse into the official NJ SIAA, you know, varsity category, and we've added a couple of coaches to do that. So now we have four coaches, so a good chunk of those monies jumped into this line here. And so this increase also includes some uniforms that we're getting there and the contributions that the board makes to sustain our gate supervisors at all of our events and to pay for the additional officials we need for our growing volleyball program. We added a freshman team and for our growing lacrosse program. So it's no surprise that those costs are rising, given those commitments. Co-curricular came down, again, in large part because we moved lacrosse from here to there. Co-curriculars are our clubs and after-school activities. We have a wholesome list of that, and frankly, we want to provide our students with opportunities after school to pursue their outside interests. Let's talk briefly about operations and maintenance and how this looks. Keeps doing that, but okay. Okay, so we have a change here in our favor. We've reduced the operations and maintenance budget. We have some funds in capital outlay. This here is the Fund 12 that allows us to buy materials that are in excess of $2,000. We also have some IT equipment being purchased there. For instance, a server costs far more than $2,000, so we have, we use the Fund 12 to take care of those issues. We're getting there, folks, not much further. Appreciate your attention. Let's talk about the analysis of tax impact. I think the local resident is most interested in these numbers here. Just so, we have a five-year snapshot here of how things have gone. This is the tax rate per $100 of assessed evaluation. Doesn't mean a whole lot, really, but to an actuarial, to an auditor, this is interesting stuff, to the tax collector, it's important. What about the average assessed value of a home in Cedar Grove? Well, you can see here the trend. It's been fairly stable, and we're sort of getting back to where we were back in '14, '15. So taken together, drum roll, please, what is the taxpayer's burden with respect to the school levy? Well, here it is. You can see here over the last few years, so for the next school year, the tax, the property tax increase with respect to a residence commitment to the district will be $8.65 a month. And we're pleased to say that we've come back down to an increase that we had in '13, '14. So I think the board, I have to commend them, their commitment is to do the best they can with what they've got, cut the fat, however you want to call that, and still deliver a quality product. Let's just very briefly go through some of the things that I talked about in my last couple of presentations. Mr. Kenny mentioned some of these things, myself. So just briefly, some of the curricular-related enhancements scheduled for 16-17, some of the things you're paying for, okay? So we're talking about offering the PSAT at the high school again. We're getting some great data there that's ultimately helping us build the master schedule in favor of our kids' pursuit of college and career readiness. We've added an AP European History class, we've added a TV production, we're adding dual enrollment. Again, I'm going quickly, we've gone through this before. The idea is, not every child is AP-ready, but we're doing all that we can to promote college-level work. We want more of our students involved in more rigorous coursework. AP is not the sole provider for that, so these dual enrollment courses, which are certified by these colleges, FDU and Syracuse, our teachers are getting trained by those universities, and they're turnkeying that curriculum back to our kids for the potential of earning college credit. Pretty cool. Our professional development focus this year, in part, will be on grades six, seven, and eight. Mrs. Mishah is working hard right now through Conker Math and with Nancy Schultz and with her team of teachers to narrow down our selection for a new math series. As you know, we have Go Math K-5, it's going great, but what are we doing in grades six, seven, and eight? I'm not going to give it away, Janine, stay tuned. She'll be coming back in the next month or so, providing us all the answers there. And we're structuring in-class support. Maybe Mr. Decore, if you have questions, can elaborate on that in grades five, seven, and eight, again, to enhance consistency across content areas. And last slide here, just some other things. We're looking to bring in a new social studies teacher at CGHS. We've committed budgetary funds to do that. Class size has gotten out of control, and it's going to allow us to add some nice courses as well for our kids there. We're going to stick with Performance Matters. We have a goal-setting meeting in June to prioritize how the 16-17 calendar will look with respect to that project. We're excited to expand our cohort of teachers to include many, many more from across the district. In terms of teacher academies and professional development, we've talked with our principals and our supervisors, and these are the priorities that we are going to continue to focus on. We're not going to, we are not a one-and-done group of professionals here. We're going to stick to it. We are committed to good habits, great readers. We've been talking about that for a couple of years now. Go Math's new, but we're on that. Common assessments, differentiation. These are the drivers of effective instruction, and we are paying attention to that. I mentioned Mrs. Mishah before, the next-generation science standards. We are continuing to transition there, looking for the proper math series and certainly the professional development to go along with implementing the NGSS. Stay tuned, 2017, it's operational. We will be ready. We're going to expand our focus on differentiated instruction, particularly in K-4 writing. We're going to expand professional development on our growing ESL and INRS populations. We're finding we're having an influx of INRS referrals, and we want to know why that is. We want to know how we can help those kids with early intervention, preventing a backlog, preventing a ground swell of that happening. So we're going to focus some efforts there.
I have a comment.
Yes.
Just briefly, Mr. Featherman, and then if anyone has any questions, obviously, we'll take them. But as we look at this budget today.
Yes.
You know, we see it in a nice little PowerPoint and, you know, on these pages in front of us, but I just want to point out all the work that it takes to get here. And, you know, it starts in our schools with our department heads and our building heads, our principals, who are all here today, our curriculum supervisors, our administrators, and it works the way up, comes to the business office and Mrs. Tavernier and the board, the Finance Committee specifically, because the Finance Committee puts in a lot of time on this, as does everyone I just mentioned, and of course, to the superintendent. So I just want to thank everybody for all the hard work. I know year in and year out, it's a challenge to get us to this point, but you make it look so easy as we sit here at the budget, at the budget hearing. I know it's not, and I just wanted to point that out to make sure everybody kind of understood all the work that, you know, all these fine people put into this and all of you. So thank you for all your hard work, and if there's any questions regarding the budget or anything in the budget proposal, we'll take them now. Hearing none, I will close the budget hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on the agenda from the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary under minutes. May I have a motion for items B-1 through B-4? B-1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of April 12, 2016. B-2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of April 2016. B-3 is a motion to approve the Treasury and Board Secretaries' reports for the month of March 2016. And B-4 is a motion to approve the Board Secretary's certification to the board pursuant to the Administrative Code that no line item has encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriation in violation of the code. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Berg?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovic?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala.
Yes. Under bills, may I have a motion for B-5, which is a motion to pay the bills that we were provided in our packets for April 26, 2016. May I have a motion for that item, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Berg?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mr. Pavulovic?
Yes.
And Mr. Sicala.
Yes. Under business, may I have a motion for items B-6 through B-14? B-6 is a motion to accept carryover funds from the 2014-2015 No Child Left Behind Title I Grant and the amounts set forth therein. B-7 is a motion to approve the Cedar Grove Public School District budget that we just heard for the 2016-2017 school year. And B, it resolved that there should be raised for general funds the amount of $25,859,739 for the upcoming school year. B-8 is a motion for, to approve ML Incorporated's Payment Application Number One in the amount of $271,460 for work completed at the Cedar Grove High School. This is from the 2014 bond referendum monies. B-9 is a motion to approve Lilich Corporation from Woodland Park to remove and dispose of friable asbestos material according to OSHA and NJDEP standards for Cedar Grove High School auditorium at the cost set forth therein, which will also be part of the 2014 bond referendum proceeds. B-10 is a motion to approve AHERA Consultants to prepare emergency response paperwork and oversight for the disposal and removal of friable asbestos material from the Cedar Grove High School auditorium at the cost set forth therein. Again, this funding will come from the 2014 bond referendum proceeds. B-11 is a motion to approve BRS Incorporated to provide packing and moving services in the Cedar Grove High School during the summer of 2016 recess. The phases are set forth in that item. The, there were several quotes that are also listed in that item. The cost for the project will not exceed $22,152. B-12 is a motion to approve relocation strategies to provide project management and oversight at Cedar Grove High School during the upcoming summer 2016 recess. This work is part of the 2014 voter-approved bond referendum project. B-13 is a motion to approve AM Consultants of B-thirteen is a motion to approve AM Consultants of Pine Brook, New Jersey to conduct the annual fixed assets inventory update for the period ending June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. The cost to conduct the annual fixed asset audit is nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And B-fourteen is a motion to retroactively approve the two thousand dollar contribution from the Cedar Grove Board of Education to the Cedar Grove APT for project graduation two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovic?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Sekala?
Yes. And we have a superintendent support this evening, Mr. Featherman.
Yes.
Yay!
Folks, what I like to do each month is do a brief synopsis using this presentation of the superintendent's report. It's chock full of information, it's just, there's too much to go through at a meeting. So what we like to do is just tackle it with a little presence. So I can't resist the science, I'm a former science teacher, and sort of the whole pond study going on at MMS, couldn't resist using this water sample as my template. So let's briefly talk about college and career readiness. Yes, this is a paramesium. I could have started with a little high spot here, and some silly, I'm sorry, I wasn't my former self. So let's talk briefly about college and career readiness. There's some great things going on, and I apologize, I have my staff here, not all of you are represented, but rest assured, you're in the report, so please, take a look. We've got some great things going on, I wanted to highlight the MMS Makers Club, they're offering some real diverse stuff for our kids. We've got two 3D printers there now, and the things that they're doing really are cutting-edge, sort of modern STEM types of thinking behaviors and activities. So we're real proud of that. Mr. Lugamino, Mr. Decourt really deserve a lot of the credit for getting that club off the ground. It's good stuff. And we're going to be expanding on our interest in STEM and in STEAM, we'll talk more about that at our next meeting. What else is going on to college and career? How about the sixth grade class? Yes, they're using that pond, and they're studying how pH and temperature are related. Is there a relationship between pH and temperature of that pond? Well, our kids are going to find out, because the main purpose of their experiment is, is pH dependent on temperature? Stay tuned, Mr. Decourt will let us know. And also going on in their classrooms is STEM Challenge, where these students are actually using spaghetti to see which of them can build the most rigorous structure to support a marshmallow on top. Good stuff. How about South End? Look, South End and North End are not immune to college and career readiness, so I'm real proud of the fact that we've got our kids working on choices for future college and careers, and they're going to be featured in their literary magazines, so we can't be more proud of what Mrs. DiMatteo's doing down there, and our youngsters, we look forward to seeing their final product. I can't resist the Student of the Month, the World Language Department selected our boy, Henry Mackin, and who could resist throwing him up there? There's Henry, he's our boy. So, "Attaboy, Henry, kudos to you." Briefly, now the referendum update, and very briefly will be done in a minute and a half. Let's talk just a couple of things of what's going on. We've had some construction meetings going on with these dates. Basically, we're meeting with the architect, we're meeting with the superintendent, the principals of their buildings, talking about North End and South End projects, the high school, what's going on there. We're meeting with the engineers, the GCs, the architect, just so that they're aware, so they can prepare their teachers for what's coming down the pike. We have to have our classrooms at North End and South End completely packed and cleared up, so that we can remove, I'm looking for piping in here, I don't see any piping in here. In the classrooms, we have piping that line, the perimeter of the rooms, all of that stuff has to be moved, and so there are lots of conversations, lots of preparations being made. To help sort of keep you following along, we're creating a website that will have photos and videos that will show you the progress of demolition, and hopefully, soon enough, of construction. So stay tuned. But let's take a couple of looks at our, some of our pictures here. Well, today, we talked, in fact, it was today, we met with the architect, Mr. Mangili, Mario, and we chose tile and brick colors for the exterior of our new concession stand. I mean, these are little details, but these are the things that we have to do to ensure the project looks right. As we've talked about, and as will be communicated by Mr. Mangili, we have an abatement issue, they found some asbestos in the auditorium unexpectedly, and so we will have to abate that asbestos this weekend, starting on Friday with the building vacant. If we were to perform this project with the building occupied, a lot more things would be put in place, air filters, and the cost would be, would skyrocket. So we're going to ask that as of Friday at four o'clock, the high school's cleared out, no one will be allowed in, we'll be posting signs around the entire perimeter, that building will be off limits until Sunday evening. We have been given assurances that the work will be done, and we will be opening on Monday with a safe air quality test. What else is going on? Couple of quick pictures, here's the safety fence, and this is our campus, it's going on, we've got the destruction of the bleachers, just some little things. This is the auditorium, it's completely gutted now, and, I mean, things are really happening, progress is really being made. And just briefly, as I've done before, just communication, community outreach, as you all know, the Friday folder's out there, just keep that in mind. It's really your go-to source for all kinds of updates, as Angel reminds me, Mike, we've got so many things in there, what can we take out? But, you know, we've got so many things going on in the community, in our buildings, it's hard to do that. But Angel, we're going to clean that up next month, I think some things are coming out of there. And lastly, just as a reminder, we're all kind of tweeting out there, and if you want to follow us. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Featherman.
Yep.
Cool. Okay, let's move on the agenda. May I have a motion for items under, from the Office of the Superintendent of Schools under Personnel, for items S-one through S-eight? S-one is a motion to approve Mr. Featherman's superintendent's report. S-two is a motion to affirm the superintendent's report on harassment, intimidation, and bullying from April twelfth, two thousand and sixteen. S-three is a motion to appoint the staff members as set forth therein with the state emergent hiring procedures. S-four is a motion to approve the substitute teachers for the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen school year as set forth in that item. S-five is a motion to approve the school volunteer as set forth therein. S-six is a motion to approve the personnel as set forth therein for the summer two thousand and sixteen extended school year program for June twenty-seventh through August first, two thousand and sixteen. S-seven is a motion to authorize the attendance at the events as set forth in that item. And S-eight is a motion to approve the leave of absences as set forth in that item. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovic?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Sekala?
Yes. At this time, I would like to open the meeting to the public for comments for any items that are either on or off the agenda. Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Does the board have any final comments tonight?
No. Okay, so... I'd just like to also thank the budget committee as well. Great job, you know, and as Mr. Sekala said, there is a lot of hard work that goes into that, and we are lucky to have two board members that always volunteered to do it for us, because it is very grueling, and it is very time-consuming, so...
Hope you guys volunteer next year, too. Just saying.
So I just wanted to thank our fellow board members as well, because it is very tedious, and it's nice to see the numbers stay where we are with all the increases in health insurance is what's really impacting us, and great job. Thank you.
Thanks.
And of course, to our administrators, as always, I shouldn't say that it goes unspoken, but, you know, we count on you guys all the time, and you always come through, so, you know, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mandela. Okay, we're going to, we'll do the announcements for the future meetings. Our next meeting is here in the North End Media Center on May tenth, two thousand and sixteen, seven PM for the executive session, eight PM for the regular meeting, and the meeting after that will be May twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen, here in the North End Media Center, seven PM executive session, eight PM for regular meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mr. Pavulovic?
Yes.
And Mr. Sekala?
Yes. This meeting is adjourned, thank you all for coming.